Call this meeting to order. Okay, the first item on our work session agenda is the Wake County 2020 real property appraisal. So I guess we have Allison Bradshaw and Marcus Kenraid from Wake County, Allison from our Finance Department.
All right, so good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Allison Bradshaw from the City of Raleigh Finance Department. I would like to introduce Marcus Kenraid, who's the Tax Administrator for Wake County. Marcus and his team have just completed the 2020 Property Tax Revaluation for all of Wake County. The last process was conducted four years ago in 2016, and the process is required by state statute. Marcus is here to talk about the process and the results at a countywide level and some specifics to the City of Raleigh. This will certainly be a topic that we talk about as part of the annual budget process, which starts next month with the first budget work session. We are also working with IT to digest the data, and we'll be prepared in the coming weeks to share more detailed information with you specific to property trends here in the City of Raleigh. And so, Marcus, I'll turn it over to you, and certainly thank you for being here today.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I appreciate the invite to come begin speaking to you about the 2020 reappraisal. I've been with the county now for seventeen years, and this is my third reappraisal in Wake County. So I want to just broadly cover what it is, and then I'll dive into some details. This is a high-level presentation, and I'll be glad to come back anytime you need me to to dive into this deeper. So the reappraisal is the process of updating all of our real property values in Wake County to reflect fair market value as of January 1, 2020. Fair market value is the most probable price that a property would bring in an open and competitive market. In other words, it's a sale or a hypothetical sale. The last countywide reappraisal was conducted four years ago with an effective date of January 1, 2016. After that, Wake County transitioned from an eight-year cycle to a four-year cycle. We do it because it's required by North Carolina general statutes to perform a reappraisal at least once every eight years. It reestablishes equity and fairness in the tax base for properties which may increase in value or decrease. We've seen decreases differently, depending on the location or the type of property it So with the reappraisal, we are talking about eighty-five percent of the Wake County tax base. Eighty-five percent of the total base is real property. The Raleigh tax base is quite similar to the overall county tax base. The Raleigh tax base is eighty-six percent real property. The other fifteen percent of the county tax base is business personal property, like computers, machinery and equipment, desks that businesses have to pay tax on. It's the registered cars that people drive. It's the unlicensed cars that people have in their yard. It's boats, aircraft, mobile homes. And then the remainder of the tax base is public utility property. Colonial Pipeline, Duke Energy Progress, that is appraised annually by the State Department of Revenue. So fifteen percent of the base, or in the case of Raleigh, fourteen percent of the base is appraised annually. The rest, we reappraise every four years. For this particular project, this breaks down how we conducted it. For the residential properties, we field reviewed fifty-one thousand parcels and did the rest from our office using our software, our aerial photography, our other tools to try to keep the cost to the taxpayers down. We have good software. We take photos of properties every year. We can do a great deal of our work on residential from our office. For rural, because there are fewer building permits in the rural areas, we do like to get out in the rural areas and look at the improvements to make sure that our data in our systems reflects what's out there in the field. And then there's typically quite a high appeal rate on commercial properties, so we do want to get out and look at the commercial properties. So we do do over fifty percent of the commercial properties in the field. For costs, we have tried to drive the cost of contracts down. When we were on an eight-year cycle, we basically worked on a reappraisal for four years. We didn't need to carry full-time staff for the entire eight-year cycle. So we sought the assistance of contract appraisers for four years in an eight-year cycle and paid them via contracts. When the commissioners shortened the cycle to four years, now we're more or less in reappraisal mode all the time, so we have used far fewer contract appraisers, but we added eleven full-time staff. So we reduced our contract costs, but we slightly increased our per parcel cost on staffing. But on a per parcel basis, I'm pleased to report that the cost for 2020 is less than what we spent in 2016. What does it cost the city? So we bill and collect and perform all the customer service for the City of Raleigh. Last year, for fiscal year ended nineteen, we collected roughly two-hundred-and-forty-six-point-five million in taxes. We charged two-tenths of one percent for our services, roughly four-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand. In 2013, the State Department of Revenue and the North Carolina DMV took over administration of the registered motor vehicle process. For the same time period, the state collected roughly twenty-nine-point-two million, and they charge a two-and-a-half percent commission, or seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. We did not change the commission rate when we perform a reappraisal. It's all absorbed. It didn't cost the city anything additional. So for the county, overall, for this four-year cycle, it's a twenty-four percent increase in market value. Twenty percent residential, thirty-three percent commercial. These values are active on our website this morning. Notices are being mailed this afternoon, and I would expect our call volume to start picking up tomorrow afternoon when our property owners get home from work. Reappraisal history, this is a twenty-eight-year reappraisal history in Wake County. You can see it was an eight-year cycle up until 2020. The parcel count in twenty-eight years in Wake County has doubled. The single-family parcel count in Wake County in twenty-eight years has tripled. You can see the big increases in value when we performed reappraisals on an eight-year cycle in an appreciating market. Twenty sixteen was an anomaly because it followed the recession. One of the reasons that the commissioners shortened the cycle to four years was to try to take some of this valuation sticker shock out of the process. We'll see if that works out or not. Twenty-eight years ago, the taxable value countywide in Wake County was twenty-one billion. Today, it's a hundred-and-sixty-two-point-two billion. It's a lot of growth in twenty-eight years. Wake, Raleigh-specific results, outpaced the county results. Residential increase on average is twenty-three percent. Commercial increase on average, thirty-six percent. Twenty-eight percent overall increase in market value in four years, about seven percent per year. The residential value drivers countywide, what drove the residential increase? We sorted this by price point, and what we saw was that the highest demand in Wake County is for the homes valued less than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. I think you all are aware that we have high demand and we have low supply of these homes in Wake County. High demand and low supply drives up prices. For Raleigh-specific, here are the residential results. Thirty-four percent increase on the properties valued less than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and that's roughly seventy-eight thousand out of a hundred-and-twenty thousand. This is a heat map of the residential shift in values for the 2016 reappraisal. We had just, we were recovering from a tremendous recession. What we saw was values decreasing on residential in North Wake County, in East Wake County, and in Southeast Wake County, and shifted to Southwest Wake County. For 2020, we have virtually seen the exact opposite. Value on residential properties has shifted to east, east-central Wake County, and this again is largely driven by the homes valued at less than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, where that housing stock is. That's where the greatest demand for the property is. That's where the values are increasing. Commercial value drivers, hotels and apartments, once again, the market is strong. This was true even in 2016. So for the Wake County real property base as a whole, prior to being reappraised, the taxable value was roughly one-hundred-and-thirty-one-point-three billion, broken down seventy percent residential, thirty percent commercial. After being reappraised, the total value is roughly one-hundred-and-sixty-two-point-one billion. That's an increase of about thirty billion, and it shifted the burden two percent off of residential to commercial, which is also something we typically see with the reappraisal. Raleigh-specific, prior to being reappraised, the base was roughly fifty-three-point-three billion, with fifty-nine percent of that residential, forty-one percent commercial. After being reappraised, sixty-eight-point-two, and again shifting the burden two percent off of residential to commercial. Now, I do want to note that this does not include the majority of your January 1, 2020 new construction. So we have roughly eight-hundred million in new construction to add. So your base, once that is complete, should be around sixty-nine-point-one billion. That's the number I have in your current tax base estimate. And then here's just a quick snapshot of the countywide results. Again, Raleigh values increased more than the county average. Zebulon did quite well, Garner, Knightdale. Tax relief, this will be a big topic, tax relief. So North Carolina has tax relief options available. In North Carolina, these are allowed by state law, not local law, and I'm required to administer this uniformly with the other ninety-nine tax administrators in the state. The tax relief is both age or disability and income-based. So if someone is sixty-five but has a high income, they wouldn't qualify. If someone is fifty but has a low income, they wouldn't qualify. They have to be both age or disability and income. Then there's also tax relief available for disabled veterans. Anyone who's interested in these can call our office. We'll be glad to walk them through it. Property owners have to apply for these tax relief options, and the due date for the applications is June 1st. So the project schedule, of course, today's January 14th. The value notices are being mailed this afternoon. We will probably expect some phone calls. Well, we've already received some phone calls, but we will probably expect a lot of phone calls starting tomorrow. I'm estimating about a seven percent appeal rate, which is around twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand appeals. Next month, the county commissioners will appoint a special board of equalization and review. This is made up of former county commissioners, former city council, retired appraisers, CPAs, farmers, people who live in the community and have some knowledge of the real estate market. They will begin hearing and ruling on appeals in April. They will adjourn from receiving more appeals on May 28th. May 28th is the last day for a property owner to file an appeal. And then you will go through your budget process, obviously, taking into consideration a revenue-neutral rate, and then adopting whatever rate you require. I do have some, I brought some customer service cards along for you all in case you receive any questions in the public. I would ask you to go ahead and give them a card if you so wish. It gives them the information to contact our call center or our email address. It's fully staffed with experts who can respond to property owners' questions. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for any questions.
We might need the stack of cards.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have one question. How do you initiate the process to appeal? Is that simply done through a phone call? You fill out information? How is that done?
So the Notice of Value has all the instructions on it. It also has a pamphlet enclosed with a lot of details. The best way to appeal is to go to our website, www.wake.gov/taxportal. Or if you just go to our website, there's a big green button that will take people to the tax portal. In there, they can submit an informal appeal electronically. The Notice of Value is also designed like an appeal form, so of course, people can just fill that out and mail it back. I would really encourage people to use the online option because it will keep our costs down, and paper gets lost. So if they have any questions, go ahead and appeal, or just call, and we can talk about it. Maybe they don't need to appeal.
Okay. Could I ask you just a follow-up question, too, on the Homestead Act that allows for low-income residents and disabled to request a reduction? You mentioned you have to be sixty-five. Now, does that also apply for disabled?
There is no age for totally and permanently disabled.
Okay. And then you mentioned thirty-one thousand or forty-six-five. What are the differentials there?
So the income threshold of thirty-one thousand is for the classic homestead exclusion. If someone qualifies for that, then they are taxed on half the value of their home and up to one acre, half the value. Above that, between thirty-one thousand and forty-six-five, it's a different type of tax relief option. It's called the homestead circuit breaker. Rather than being value-based, it, in essence, stops tax at a certain threshold. So what would happen if someone's income was, say, forty thousand? We would take that income times five percent, so I think that's two thousand dollars. If their tax bill is greater than two thousand dollars, they would be responsible for paying the two thousand, and then the balance above that would be deferred.
Okay.
And they wouldn't have to pay it until they sold it. We have twenty-two properties in Wake County that qualify for that.
How many?
Twenty-two, because it takes either a very high value or a very high tax to be beneficial. It was really designed for beach properties, mountain properties, where the values have really skyrocketed.
So this is from the legislature?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know how many people qualify under the thirty-one thousand?
Yes, ma'am. It's about one-point-five percent of the properties in Wake County, around thirty-two to thirty-five hundred.
Mr. Branch, you have a question?
I do. It has to do with your outreach, other than, because we have some seniors that aren't computer savvy.
Right.
And even though they're getting their tax bill in a letter form, still may have some challenges. What other methods are there for, you know, those that need assistance in understanding their tax bill, is the county making to reach those?
So again, it's in the Notice of Value. It's in the pamphlet. I'm actually going out with Ms. Rainey to do a roadshow here next month to try to reach out to people that may have trouble or need assistance in filling out the applications. Anytime I get a chance to speak to the media, I stress the tax relief options. Beyond that, I'm certainly open to any suggestions that you all might have to try to reach people.
And my second question is, I know we have the Homestead Act. Does the county think of any other programs to help? Because in these areas that are hot during this tax season, they're in areas that we already know are facing a lot of changes, where those on fixed income have been living predominantly for years, that they just may not have the means to keep up with the rising value. Are there any other tools, or is this the conversation the county is looking to have?
So there are municipal jurisdictions in North Carolina experiencing the redevelopment pressure that we're seeing here, and they have offered, I believe it's sort of a grant program to assist people. That would need to be something administered at the jurisdiction itself. I'm not aware that Wake County commissioners are considering something like that. There's nothing in the property tax statutes that would authorize the tax office to administer something beyond what we already do.
But you could if you knew about a program, and you could recommend it to the county commissioners.
Sure.
Okay.
So take that a little bit further. So counties can have their own, can have different, or their own property tax relief programs?
No, sir.
They're allowed to? They're not allowed to?
No. Property tax statutes are prescribed by the General Assembly in their uniform across the state.
Well, back to Councilman Branch's question. He was saying some municipalities have come up with some programs. I'm just saying, so legally, can they come up with, can a county come up with a different program that's just county, you know, just for their county? That's not, not different, I mean, it doesn't go against what the state has said, but it's just something different and new, and only applies to their county.
So what I'm familiar with in the City of Charlotte, and I believe the City of Durham, is some sort of a grant program. It's not specific to the property tax statutes. It's not specific to the Mecklenburg or Durham County Tax Office. It's some sort of a loan. I don't know any specifics about it, and I think probably your staff has more knowledge of that than I do. In terms of any county doing something different, granting an exemption, that's not lawful.
Beyond, again, beyond what the state allows.
Correct.
That's not lawful.
Correct.
So you can come up with your own category in a county and say, we want to also exempt those folks. You cannot do that.
Cannot do that.
Mr. Melton?
When the mayor was asking about the two tax relief categories or programs, I think you said that for one, there are only twenty-two residences that are taxpayers that qualify, and then the other was around thirty-two-hundred, maybe?
Right.
And is that all Wake County, or is that within Raleigh?
That's all of Wake County. I don't have the Raleigh-specific numbers in my head right now.
And besides those two programs, there is not another program for tax abatement or tax assistance?
There's slews of tax abatements and tax incentives, but specific to individual property owners.
Yes.
Those are the two.
Those are the two. Because it seems like an application, the number of folks who can take advantage of those programs, it seems very low.
The income threshold is quite low for Wake County. That income threshold is uniform statewide, and I would say that thirty-one thousand would go a lot further in Burte County or Gates County than it does in Wake.
As applied in Wake County.
Right.
And both of those are based on age or disability and income. So income is the second prong. But for folks, so if we were talking about a program to help long-term residents stay in their homes that are on fixed incomes or limited means, especially in areas that are rapidly gentrifying, we're seeing a lot of displacement, there's not, this program, you have to have age, disability, and then the income kicks in.
It's both.
Both.
It's both. So you'd have to be sixty-five.
Okay.
If you're not 65, you would need to be totally and permanently disabled and you would have to be below the income threshold.
And so, what we were trying to figure out then is if, for Raleigh to be doing anything, the only real sort of tools we have then are some sort of grant or funds that we could, we'd have to do that separately as a municipality?
I would leave that to your city manager to...
What tools would we have?
Right. So, this is something that's been kicking around for the last decade or so among local governments in North Carolina because the tax system is administered at the state level, right? And so, I guess the way to look at the difference is, what Mr. Kinraid is talking about is the payment. You can't defer the payment of the taxes.
Right.
Right? And so, that's the programs he's talking about. The two that he's mentioning are basically direct grant or loan programs from the municipality to the resident. So, the resident would pay the property tax, but then potentially would receive money from, in this case, the city, based on your criteria or things like that. It's basically a grant program for individuals.
Okay.
That's the, what's the difference as opposed to not having to pay the tax?
Do you know, are you familiar with the dollar amount that Charlotte spends on that grant program and what the implications are?
I'm going to ask Allison Bradshaw to comment to more of the specifics. My information is dated, so.
I just want to say thank you. Tax issues are really complicated and so being able to work through it like this is very helpful, so thank you.
Yes, I will say we're in the process of kind of gathering all this data from Durham, as was mentioned, and Charlotte. I believe that Charlotte had budgeted 750,000 in their current year and they're actually going through the process now. So, I guess I don't know specifically all the criteria as to how that grant program worked. I am under the assumption that if you met the counties, essentially, it's not a double dip. You can also then benefit from the city. So, it's more of an incremental base. But we're happy to obviously provide a lot more detail on Durham's program as well as Charlotte's, if you'd like to model that.
And basically, the way we can have any impact is not really based on what the property's value is, on what our tax rate, what we decide for our tax rate. So, I think that's something for us to keep in mind when that comes up before us with everything else that we have to pay for. That's how we pay for it.
Mayor, if I could, to Mayor Proten Branch's point, I want to make a couple of quick comments. One was also just to simply say thanks to Marcus for coming today. I mean, the letters are going out this afternoon, so he's busy. So, we appreciate the time to come and speak to us today. So, thank him for that. The second is the discussion about the tax rate itself. So, we are, this is a question for a revenue-neutral tax rate, which we will be discussing with you as a part of your budget process. And by state statute, we are required to provide what a revenue-neutral tax rate would be. In other words, that's the tax rate that would generate the same amount of property tax revenue had revaluation not occurred. There's still growth in that number, but that's what we would have estimated to occur without the revaluation. Wake County has provided a preliminary estimate of that revaluation number based on the current assumptions in an online calculator, which is their preliminary number. I would say that doesn't represent necessarily the city of Raleigh's final recommendation on that. This is January. The data will get better between now and May. So, you can see our finance people and Marcus both nodding. That's good. So, the final formal revenue-neutral tax rate will be in the budget document in May. And it might be different than what's on the website today, but, you know, if so, it's not by a whole lot. So, that's a decrease of about 43 cents to the county's estimate of around 35 cents. So, that's a decrease in the tax rate based on a revenue-neutral assumption. So, just for the sake of the audience as well as council members, that means that if your individual rate of residential property growth occurred greater than the average, you would end up with additional tax liability from the city of Raleigh's calculation. If your rate was less than the average, then it's a little bit lower if the rate was revenue-neutral. Does that make sense? So, it's setting to the average is what that rate represents. In the budget process, we will talk to you about that in greater detail and make our recommendation in May, including a demonstration of what we believe the revenue-neutral tax rate is.
A question. Thank you, Mayor. Marcus, thank you for being with us. Curious, these income limits for these tax benefit programs. Do you know when they've been last updated or do they have any kind of automatic adjustment for inflation?
They're updated annually by the State Department of Revenue using a social security index. Thank you.
And, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. Just one quick thing, perhaps it's not, we can make it quick and I can follow up offline. So, we sort of got into this earlier. I just want to understand more clearly the outreach that's done. I understand that there's a pamphlet that accompanies the letter that folks receive. But for anyone that qualifies for the two programs that they could receive potential relief from, I just want to be very clear about how they receive that communication. So, for anyone that's permanently disabled, the only way that they will receive communication is through the letter that they receive from the county and a pamphlet. Is that correct?
And a tax bill in July. It's on there, too.
And veterans. The only way that they'll receive notification that they are eligible potentially for relief is through this letter and a pamphlet.
Yes.
And the same thing for anyone that's over 65?
Yes.
So, I just, I think that we have to do better. I mean, we're talking about some of the most vulnerable populations in the county and I can't fix the county. But if we're thinking about this from a city perspective, I have to applaud Ms. Rainey. Thank you for pushing. And the fact that a lone citizen is making someone from the county go on a roadshow to talk to people, and thank you for agreeing to go. I'm not, this isn't, I'm not pushing you. We, as a body, need to think about how we get this information out because I think that when people open up this letter and they see that they're already cost-burdened and now their taxes have gone through the roof and they're, from how they're seeing this, this is devastating. And so, they might not even make it to the pamphlet. And so, I just, we have to be very, very thoughtful about what this means to the people that could potentially receive that very necessary support and make sure that they're getting it and that they're getting it and processing it and that we are there to make sure that they're getting it two and three times and they're not just getting it once. So, I would love to talk with you offline and whoever at the county level is in charge of kind of the communication side and make sure that we in the city can help send that message two, three, and four times so that we can help support that. So, thank you.
Could we, let's have the city manager follow up on that.
Yeah.
As opposed to you doing that, Sage? And then you can just kind of let us know.
Yeah, I think we have some, if I could, Mayor, I think we have some alternatives related to our communications function where we can put some things into our communications and make sure that we connect citizens directly to Wake County where they can get the response they need.
And make sure your policy analyst has this information because we will get emails and we will get phone calls.
Oh, they have it.
Yes. So, and ask them to follow up because they can provide that information quickly and get them in the system. So, Mr. Branch?
I just have one more question around that 31. Does a person's, I understand pension, but do they also count their, as far as income, their pension plus social security? Do they combine the two that count towards that number?
Yeah.
And that's why you have so few people that ask you to qualify?
The statute language says income from all sources.
Okay.
Yep.
So, that's why no one really qualifies because...
Well, 32 to 3,500 people.
Yeah.
That's, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Marcus, for being here. We'll be thinking about you over the next few weeks.
This is what I do, so.
Well, thank you for coming out here and explaining all of that. It was very helpful to learn more about the tax abatement program and what you're going to be doing. So, thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next, we have planning update. And Ken Bowers?
Mayor and council, if I could, while Mr. Bowers is getting himself prepped, this is something that we've been doing for the last year or so with just periodic updates from what's going on in planning and development. And there are no specific votes or requirements today. This is really just an opportunity to share with you their quite robust work program and quite significant amount of work that they're managing really well. This is an opportunity to get, reach clarification and understanding and any feedback you may have, we would certainly welcome. So, Mr. Bowers?
All right. Thank you very much for that introduction. In the interest of time, I'm going to zip through this presentation fairly expeditiously, but if at any time you wish for me to slow down or ask me some questions, feel free to interject. So, I'll start by saying that Raleigh is a city that does a lot of planning and we've got a lot of plans on the books. And we can think of them as two things. We have internal plans, the daddy of which is the strategic plan, a council-adopted document that guides a lot of our internal work across the organization. And then under that, we have departmental business plans and under that, division-specific plans, all of which link back to that strategic plan. But then, an even larger stack of plans is our external plans that are designed to influence the outside world. And the daddy of that is the comprehensive plan, which is our big document. We just updated it that governs growth and development throughout the city. And then we have plans that focus on subtopics. They might focus on a specific geography. They might focus on an infrastructure system or they might focus on a topic. And we have plans in all of those categories that we'll be talking about today. I mentioned the comprehensive plan, actually referenced in our business plan as a thing to keep it up to date. And we have just recently done a comprehensive update. It was a fairly lengthy process, but it was successfully concluded in November of last year, shortly before this council took their seats. And our goal moving forward is to make our progress reporting on it more robust. It was somewhat on hiatus while we were doing the update, as well as to take a different approach. Instead of trying to update the whole document at once, take themes such as transportation or housing or some of the other topics in it and run processes on those and do sort of rolling updates every couple of years. Any large planning document, it's important that you keep it fresh. If it gets too out of date, then people stop paying attention to it. And our goal is to keep our comp plan fresh into the future. Eventually, we'll have to do something beyond 2030, but we're still good for a few more years. All those people with Vision 2020 plans, I hope that they were able to take care of that in time. So, going on to current initiatives, we have things that we call ongoing programs. It's like running the rezoning program, annexation, servicing the various boards and commissions that we support, which are several. We have 13 planning studies underway, two studies underway in our historic preservation division, two major annexation projects, and our urban design center is managing three projects as well. And then we have one real estate initiative, which is to look at the reuse of the old historic SO station on the south side of Moore Square underway. And of these, nine are, have consultants that are assisting the city, but 22 of them are being led directly by the city staff. So, the majority of our stuff is actually done without consulting. We're going to divide these updates into four categories. There's some stuff that was recently completed, either just before or right as this council was taking their seats, stuff that's in an advanced state of work and is entering the next phase towards its march to completion, stuff that is newly underway, and then stuff that is in our business plan to start but has not yet started, so we call that on the horizon.
So, Ken, can we do this, if you don't mind? When you do the recently completed projects and are finished with that, I'll ask the council members if they have any questions, then we'll go to the next section. You good with that?
Yes, that's actually great because these are things that are recently done, but you're seeing them for the first time. And one of the questions is what to do with them now that they are, now that we have a report that's ready to present to you.
Okay.
Reports which are physically here that we'll distribute at the end of this meeting.
Thank you.
So, one of them is a study of best practices for how we regulate development on hillsides. And almost every site in Raleigh, you know, we're not in Kansas. This is not flat. There's, it has some topography and some sites are more, have more topography than others. We wanted to look at the UDO. We realized that some of the way that we have to apply measurements such as, you know, transparency at the ground floor were confusing when the site had a lot of topography to it. We wanted to have a system of measuring height that allowed folks to get their full development allocation under our height standards, but also didn't provide incentives to just flatten out the site with the retaining wall next to the sidewalk, creating a lot of blank spaces in our public realm. And so, this study was done. It looked at best practices across the nation and has provided a lot of recommendations. Some of those recommendations clarify measurement. Some of them are more sweeping. Some of them went involved new regulations. It's a lengthy report. Likely, the council may not want to move on everything that's in there, but there's probably some good stuff that would help improve the development code that's in there and we would like a chance in the appropriate venue to go through that with you. Likewise, growing out of that study, the contract with our co-consultants was amended to include a special look at how we regulate residential infill. It's a thing that's a hot-button issue in Raleigh and when I say residential infill, we're talking about the redevelopment and replacement of homes in primarily single-family neighborhoods. So, we did a best practices scan here. We also did a community survey and a community outreach process. We wanted to benchmark ourselves against how other communities have done this. One of the interesting things was I don't think we've ever done an online survey in our department that had so many responses. Over 3,000 individuals took the survey and we had over 10,000 individual comments as part of that. One of the interesting things is that a large majority of the respondents thought that infill could be positive, but they wanted to see it, to do something, they wanted it to be an alternative to sprawling development and they wanted to see it not negatively impact affordability. And right now, the way infill is occurring is not really speaking to either of those. The detriments that were identified were less aesthetic and more functional. They included the loss of trees through development, the loss of affordability because the new houses were typically at a higher price point than what they replaced, and also stormwater impacts. And in fact, the Stormwater Manual is looking at this very issue right now and this report has some recommendations on that. The industry is also interested in can we make the process and standards for infill development, how it's reviewed and permitted more streamlined. So, again, our next steps here would be we would like at some point an opportunity at greater length to present some of the findings from this report and decide whether ordinance amendments or other policy changes are desired. And that's the pause that you're...
Okay. Any questions from, or comments from council members?
I guess for me, as far as the infills, as far as from council, when will you be coming back for us to really start?
We are not currently scheduled to come back to you at all, so we would have to get, receive some direction as to whether this should appear on one of your regular agendas, whether you would like to hear it in a committee at some point or whether you would like to get the advice of the planning commission as to what they would recommend we do with these studies.
And it's just for infill or the hillside slopes?
It's for both.
Both?
Well, it's the same potential scope of options for next steps for both of them.
Yes.
I'll read this and get back with you.
Okay. No decision has to be made today, but at some point.
Can you maybe mention this, but these were requested by city council?
They were.
In some form?
They were. So, residential, or the hillside study was a little older. It was proposed in our work program, adopted in the budget and given funding to move forward. The residential infill was initiated directly by city council. They wanted us to extend the scope of that contract to do a parallel study of residential infill development.
So, is there a process that, do we send these to a committee typically or how's it typically work?
Well, I was just going to ask Counselor Stewart if she would like to take these into the GNR committee for review and then come back with a recommendation to the city council.
Sure. Yes.
Okay. So, that's the route. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay. So, we will refer these two items to growth in natural resources.
Thank you.
And I don't want to overload you, so if...
Do you want to take one?
I was going to say we could take one and save healthy, save, healthy, vibrant community if you would like.
I wonder if it makes sense to send infill to that committee and keep... I wonder if it makes sense to send infill to that committee and keep hillside and growth and natural resources. I see hillside, especially if you're talking about steep slopes, having a bit more of an impact on environment.
Okay.
And then we can maybe be on similar timelines even.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that? All right. You got that? We're referring to, to two different committees. Okay.
Sounds great.
Very quickly, who drafted the infill survey? Or who created that?
The infill survey was largely drafted in-house, and our community engagement coordinator, Dr. Kristen Williams, had a large role in the wording of that.
Awesome.
She has academic training in survey design.
Great. Thank you.
And there's a fairly detailed report on the findings, which I think I would recommend to your attention. Thanks. So, here are some major projects we're doing. This is a consultant-led study, filling in the gap. We have corridor plans for Capitol Boulevard from 440 to downtown and from 540 north, and then this is looking at the most difficult and problematic section, which is the section between 540 and 440. And this is a very large, eight-to-ten-lane, heavily-used roadway today. Not a lot of pedestrian amenity, but it actually is the busiest transit corridor in the Go Raleigh system today. So, we are planning for a multimodal future for this corridor that will provide some opportunity for some of the property along it to evolve in a more mixed-use direction. We have done a number of outreaches, ranging from major public meetings to a lot of appearances of pop-ups in places. We've done a lot to try to reach out to the diverse communities. There's a significant Hispanic and Latino communities located up and down this corridor, and we've done a public survey that just recently closed. We are in a thing called design directions. We've essentially tested the concepts for how the corridor can be improved from a multimodal perspective. It's a fairly engineering-heavy approach that involves some new structures, but the public so far has been good with that. And the next step is to really finalize the transportation and land use policies, develop a comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian network that'll be through the study area, not all of which will be on Capitol Boulevard, but will use some of the adjacent facilities. And then that final study should be coming to the City Council in the next few months. Another large area plan is Midtown St. Albans. This has its origin both in council action and some citizen petitions. The greater Midtown area has seen an enormous amount of growth and development and change, both within the core of North Hills as well as properties around there. And there's a lot of change baked into zoning that's already approved. There's some significant zoning entitlements approved by the council that have yet to be built. So, the area, the neighborhoods around here, want to make sure that our transportation and other infrastructure is up to this, and that we are accommodating this growth and preserving quality of life. And so, that's what this study is really focused on. We're pretty advanced in this, in the sense that we have gone through the majority of the public process. We have been testing the ideas. We used a unique method to help folks prioritize by giving them a bunch of ideas with budget numbers attached. And Midtown bucks they could spend on it, so they had to, they had to decide what they felt was most important. We thought that was a very effective way to engage folks in some of the trade-offs. And I think there's a lot of exciting stuff in this, so we're looking to bring this to you in the spring. Southeast Special Area Study is kind of unique, because it's actually looking for areas that are not in our jurisdiction. The city has two large future-growth areas that have been negotiated with Wake County and the adjacent municipalities that we're eventually supposed to expand our jurisdiction and annex into. And the southeast area is larger, is the largest of those, and it's also an area where utility projects are going to be bringing infrastructure to places that haven't had that infrastructure in the past, and the expectation is that that will entice development interest into the area. And our current land use policy is basically a slather of low-density residential with a couple of noes that sort of correspond to wherever there happened to be some historic commercial use to date. And we wanted something more sophisticated than that, as a, as a growth and development approach that looked at what are the appropriate noes out here, where with higher densities? Can we do more clustering and open space preservation? And so, this study has done this outreach. It was uniquely challenging to go into an area where the city is currently not. We have no jurisdiction there and engage people. We worked with the county on this and did a unique process. And our next and final round of community engagement will be starting up next month, and we're hoping to confirm the findings that we've made to date and to bring this to council later this year. We're, as I mentioned, coordinating with Wake County, who are updating their county-wide land use plan and comprehensive plan right now. Equitable development around transit is a key part of our BRT implementation, and what we wanted to do was do some goal-setting for the BRT system as a whole, as opposed to some of the corridor-specific planning that's happening as part of our project development process. And the two key questions we had were, we know that the city's going to grow by a certain amount going forward. How much of that growth do we want to be served by this BRT system? And that would provide some guidance as to what kind of development intensities we should be complicating, contemplating. If we want 20% of that growth to be served by BRT, well, that's a certain number of units and jobs, and to put that at these stations means a certain density. And so, we wanted to have that conversation with the public and make those trade-offs explicit. If we are uncomfortable with that level of intensity, then we also have to be comfortable with the fact that less of our growth is going on the BRT corridors. The other thing was really taking a deep dive into the policy options that we have to help address affordability and equity along these corridors, because there's a lot of concern in the community about what the impact of this infrastructural investment will be on the existing housing market where it's landing. And we wanted to make sure that affordability and providing access to the people who need it the most was top of mind in our planning going forward. So, we have done two rounds of workshops. We did a workshop that involved looking at growth scenarios. We did a round of workshops that was focused on the housing issues. We're currently in the midst of refining all those policy options, and we're hoping to present all this at a public open house in February and give you an update on it early this year. We also have a study underway about how to enhance our community engagement process. Planning probably does as much or more direct community engagement of any department in the city, because it's at the core of every major study that we do, and there is a direction given from City Council to look at, take a real look at, how can we do better? How can we, what are the best practices we can do? How can we broaden the base of our engagement, provide more avenues for people to engage, particularly those who have difficulty attending traditional public meetings, and really reflect the state-of-the-art? My charge was, was we wanted to be best-in-class in engagement. And so, we hired a great consultant team, which was actually mostly locally-based, to do the study with us. And they've been doing, they've gone through two phases. They've been benchmarking us against national best practices. They've been attending a lot of our meetings, taking notes, and they are coming back with some fairly comprehensive recommendations. The end product of this is basically, you know, a playbook of things that we can use based on the nature of the study that we're doing, that will provide some level of standardization to how we go about engagement going forward. And just so you know, these are sort of the underlying principles, or success factors that we've converged on, that when we do engagement, it has to be widely known, the venues, whether they're virtual or real, or have to be accessible and accommodating. We have to be culturally sensitive. We have to make sure that the opportunities are meaningful, and that we have to be authentic and accountable, which means that the people who participated will know what was done with their participation and how the plan changed in response to it. Going to go through a few things that are newly underway.
Okay. Can we just take a break?
Yes.
For any questions?
The, sorry, you can go ahead. The, the community engagement, the equitable development around transit, sorry.
Yes.
You mentioned that there's going to be the public open house in February, and then you'll hopefully come back with a council update sometime early 2020.
Yes.
I think that this information's going to be, like, vital to our discussions concerning any bond that we may be wanting to, to put together regarding affordable housing, housing affordability. So, I feel like it's going to be important to maybe get that update or information before or concurrent with the, those conversations. So, I don't know how we can time that. Does that make sense?
I think that Larry and Ken have been coordinating that effort for several months now, or actually, there's been, isn't there a task force among the staff that's been looking at this for over a year?
Yes. So, Councilmember Melton, your point is valid from the standpoint of the integration of affordable housing into the BRT discussion. I think what's happening is we have that integrated on multiple projects simultaneously. So, you're going to get a lot of that feedback as a part of the affordable housing bond discussion anyway. In other words, you'll see that as a category.
Right.
So, I think both inform each other. Your deadline that we will propose for making a decision on a November 2020 affordable housing bond, or any other type of bond, would be May 19th. So, whether or not you receive the final report from this may or may not need to occur before you have to make that decision. In other words, there's a long run of those things overlapping each other. Part of what this equitable development study is doing is looking at the BRT system as a whole.
Yeah.
And that's one of those elements. In other words, you're going to get it in multiple different ways. We can certainly try to bring that back before May the 19th, but I think this is a pretty large-scope project, so we'd have to ask Mr. Bowers.
And I don't want to put any extra work on folks, but some of the, I know there'll be some overlap, but particularly the results from the workshops and the online surveys, that may not necessarily be included in the housing information we received. Is that right?
So, what you would get, what you're going to get back on the housing piece is the various categories, and one of the categories of the affordable housing bond will be the relationship to affordable housing and transit. So, you'll, you'll get some, some of that information there. We can bring back information that was generated from the activity into that discussion, with maybe not having to bring back the whole study.
I think that was my, the intent of my question. If pieces of this that could be useful in us forming that, and during that bond discussion, if we could get that while we, before we have to have...
We'll just pull in relevant information.
Yeah, not this whole thing, if, yeah, got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And we have, we have been running this particular project with all due haste, because we felt like the results of it were very important for the detailed-level planning that was happening at the corridor level. So, we are working to get this turned around as quickly as we can.
Yeah. I just want to make a comment that Don Belk did a presentation on Southeast Special Area Study last night at the South CAC, and it was positively received by the community as far as getting information. And they're really looking to be engaged in that. And I think, as you talk about community engagement, looking at all venues and avenues that, as far as making sure everyone's included, is a good idea, and I like those steps that you're making towards that.
Thank you.
All right. I had two questions. One, I wanted to know who the consultant was, who you worked with on the community engagement process?
Yeah. So, the, the lead is affirmed by the name of Public Participation Partners. And there was some, two subconsultants on the contract, Alta Planning and Design, who are well-known for their, for their pedestrian and bike planning, as well as Micky Fern from North Carolina State.
All right. My other question, with the Midtown St. Albans plan?
Yes.
What's the status, and I'm not sure if you would know this, but of the Six Forks Road Corridor project?
I'm not entirely sure of the status of the project. I know that we have a approved plan for it. I don't know if I see any transportation staff. We'd like to get back to you with a precise dates. I know that it's in process, but when...
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, skipping ahead. Okay. So, one thing that's currently underway and is a significant UDO revision to deal with how we create tiers of site plans and, and how they are reviewed in terms of which sections of the UDO apply. Currently, there is a, a sort of a minor plan called a plot plan, and then everything else is a site plan. And the threshold between the minor plan and the site plan is based on a relatively obscure parking calculation, which sweeps up a lot of stuff that most people would think would be pretty minor, such as changing out the use of an inline tenant in an old building, into a site plan process, which is a problem. So, this is intended to solve that problem and look at a more rational set of tiers for how site plans are reviewed and classified. So, where we are with this today is that we were authorized in November to proceed with this text change. We have under contract Roger Walden from Clarion Associates is working on this, is working with us on this, and we expect to have the general recommendations for what will be in the text change done by the end of this month, at which point we will need to draft the actual ordinance language, go to the Planning Commission, come back to council. There are some, we understand there's a sense of urgency on this, so we are trying to accelerate our work on this particular UDO change. The next thing, which is already in process, but is relatively new, is a corridor study for Western Boulevard. And of the BRT corridors, Western Boulevard kind of follows one corridor until it gets out to Jones Franklin Road, and there's three alternatives that shoot it towards Cary. So, one of the key things this is supposed to do is determine which of those three alternatives is our locally-preferred alternative. But it's also designed to really take a hard look at exactly how BRT gets accommodated in Western Boulevard, because there were a lot of unanswered questions with that lingering from the Wake Transit Plan. And we need to identify where are the best station locations in terms of serving existing communities, as well as the potential for new development. And so, our kickoff happened just in November, had been delayed due to a hurricane. We had pretty good participation that day. We are doing online surveys with over 400 participants, and our next meetings are planned for the spring. We're going to look at land use and urban design. There is a pending request from the last council that we are supposed to come back to you with in the not-too-distant future about the potential to proactively map our unused transit overlay district over certain sites on this Western Boulevard corridor. And so, before that would be going to process, we would want to have a conversation about how that could happen and get your authorization as to whether you wish to move forward with that. Our goal is to try to wrap this up, because this is going into the design and project development phase this summer. So, as you know, all this BRT stuff is on a pretty aggressive timeline, and so we are having to do our planning on a similarly aggressive timeline. And then, the last thing that's starting up, and this is currently at the phase that there are, and RFQ is out on the street, and we'll be getting our proposals in soon, and we'll be reviewing and going through consultant selection process, is a process to look at the edges of Dix Park, and particularly the existing residential neighborhoods around it, and how we can plan for them and into what is sure to be some growing real estate pressure as the amenity at Dix Park emerges. So, this is going to be, I think, a crucially-important study for ensuring that the benefits of the park are equitably shared across the community. And we have accordingly designed, I think, probably the most intensive and innovative public process for it that we've done to date, because there's a lot of detailed conversations to have with the affected communities. So, our hope is to go through the selection process and get a recommendation for consultant selection to you in March, if, so that we can kick this, get the contract executed and kick it off in May. And I believe you have received in an earlier council update, but we could re-up this a detail about the public process and how we propose to organize it. And then another study, which I thought would be of interest, is our Historic Preservation Program is doing a study to document the history of significant sites to the LGBTQ community in Raleigh. There's a, there's a largely untold history here, and what we're doing is researching, and we want to tell that history and potentially identify any, any local landmarks that might fall out of that study. So, we have hired a historian to do this. They are collecting oral histories. We're going to conduct, we've conducted a community meeting. If there are any potential landmarks, we would need to notify the property owners. But I'm looking forward to seeing this report when it's done. It should contain some interesting things that are not widely known. Then...
Okay. So, any questions on what was just presented?
Just one question. Have we done historic content studies for other communities?
Yes, we have. It's been a while. You may recall with the, that for the African-American community, there was a large oral history project and book that resulted in, in a book called Culture Town. It came out in the 90s, at the time Linda Harris Esmondson was on the commission and helped spearhead that. And there was actually some of the oral history, and fortunately, it's on cassette tapes. We still have copies of it in our, in our office. That was the technology at the time, but...
Do all of you know what a cassette tape is?
You know, they're making a comeback.
We're googling it right now.
Cassettes are making a comeback. I was at a hopscotch a few years ago, and they were selling cassettes, and I bought one. Band out of Boston, Speedy Ortiz. It sounded horrible, but the music was pretty good, and I still have, I still have a working cassette player and an entire hi- And I still have, I still have a working cassette player and an entire hi-fi system in my house with like the big speakers on the floor.
I gotta confuse.
That shows you how, that shows you how old school I am.
I love it.
People don't know what sound is today, they listen to little earbuds and speakers, but back in the day, we had hi-fis. There were stores.
I thought it was the eight-track on your desk, I'm sorry.
Can I interject real quick and just say, that being said, that, that track, is there any plans to put that information, those stories, on electronic files that could be accessed by anybody?
I can look into that.
We can start backwards. I have comments on each of these.
Okay.
Lucky you. So on the LGBTQ Historic Context Study, where did that request come from?
It was initiated by the Historic Development Commission.
Okay. What's the timeline on that being implemented?
I don't know, I don't know off the top of my head the specific timeline. I believe it's supposed to be, that the bulk of the work should be wrapping up this spring.
Can, can we talk about that? I just, I have ideas about, I, I think there's other ways to, to Corey's, to Counselor Branch's point. I think this is necessary and one step in the right direction. And I think that to Counselor Branch's and Counselor Nicole's point, I think that we have.
Really?
I was just wondering if you were paying attention. I, I, I would like to see how we can update other, you know, historical context studies that have been done, especially as we're looking at issues of gentrification and this conversation is happening about people being displaced. I think that it's an opportune time for us to go in and really capture stories that are likely leaving and, and capture that. So would be open to having that conversation if that's appropriate. Not trying to stop what's happening, I just want to add to it if I wouldn't.
Counselor Martin, I was just thinking out loud here, would there be some value in referring this to the Innovation and Economic Development Committee for some type of review and discussion?
Perhaps. I, I almost wonder if, you know, I, I don't know if it's so much a council committee or if it's something more along the lines of the Arts Commission or something. You know, I almost feel like it's outside of our scope of what we need to discuss and more Human Relations Commission or Arts Commission, and letting them kind of think through how we document these stories and, and then coming back with a, I mean, I think this moves forward as it is, and then I think, how do we layer that, you know, moving forward? But I'm open to suggestions.
Well, if we sent it to committee, members of the Human Relations Commission or the Arts Commission could be asked to attend.
Yeah, I'm, I'm certainly open to that, if that, if.
I'm, I'm fine to accept it into committee. I just want to make clear, I think that this LGBTQ Historic Context Study is very important, and I'm glad that it was initiated, and I hope that it will continue on whatever track and course it's continued on. I do agree there's some good discussions about preserving history of other groups, but this doesn't have to be a one or the other, or because of one, we need others. This can be a yes and conversation. So I, I thank you and everyone for this study. I would like this one to continue, I think it's extremely important, and if we want to take the issue of additional studies into EDI, I'm happy to accept it there.
Well, I think part of it is, how do we communicate and tell the story? Is, is that what you, it's, it's more about the communications function of telling the story?
Yeah.
So I don't know if you want to have that discussion in committee, or if you would just like to meet with Mr. Bowers and.
Yeah, I think maybe let's meet, and then we can talk.
Sure.
Can we, the two of us meet with Mr. Bowers and just talk, and we can come up with a solution?
I'm fine with that, if everybody else is okay.
Awesome.
Quick question for me.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
You have hired an architectural historian already?
Yes.
Okay, so they, that person would then be responsible, according to this status, for collecting the oral histories?
Yes.
So you've already got someone that they could talk to in terms of understanding how those histories will be documented?
Yes, and I can, when we talk, I can give a better picture of exactly where we are with this and how much work has been done to date. I know that work has started on it.
Yeah.
You know, obviously, it being the Historic Development Commission, part of this is focused on the physical sites, sort of the physical manifestation of where, over the important community spots, which is a fascinating story, because of course historically many of these were, were hidden. They were, they were secret, and it's uncovering that sort of secret, hidden history is part of what this project is all about.
Sure, thank you. On the Dix Edge area study, I had a question. Well, I'm looking, did anyone else have feedback on this?
I, I just had some feedback. When I read this particular piece, and I think it was the manager's report, I just wanted to say excellent job. The plan is very unique. It really, it's not just about meetings, it's about door-to-door contact with people. I love the pop-up office, I love the idea of doing bike rides and bus tours, whatnot. I mean, this, to me, was just excellent in terms of the community engagement piece, so I just wanted to say good job.
Thank you, thank you.
On Western Boulevard Corridor Study, do we receive as part of that properties that are available, that are not currently, let me back up. I'm aware that we have an opportunity along BRT routes to provide mixed income and affordable housing to make sure that people are directly on the line. And so it would be of interest to me to understand where there might be opportunities from a land use perspective to do that. Is that something that's included in what you give to us? And is that, if my question's not clear, we can just talk offline, because I don't want to eat up more of your time?
Yeah, I think what you're saying is, are we looking for opportunities where sites could be put in play?
Correct.
For affordable housing? And the answer is yes. Now, the thing is that that's a, that's a process and not a report, because it's always a moving target.
Sure.
Stuff that's in play today may not be in play tomorrow, and stuff that's not in play may be in the future. So what, what the study does is give us guidance for how to approach that question and kind of keep our finger on what's going on, on the pulse of what's going on in the corridor. So I, there's actually a conversation that's coming out of that work group that was referenced earlier, for this and other studies, about how the city can be nimble in terms of being able to seize opportunities when they arise. And I think that is an important discussion that's coming to you soon.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
I had one more question about the plot plan, site plan, UDO amendment.
Yes.
This is causing some major issues.
Yes.
Especially with, Counselor Martin and I were contacted yesterday by a developer who wants to put a coffee shop back in, like, the coffee shop was there, then it was a jewelry shop, now he has a tenant for a coffee shop and has to go through a six-to-eight month process with the Board of Adjustment, et cetera, et cetera. How can we, I mean, how can we help resolve this? And can we resolve this outside of this UDO amendment or not?
So the second question is, is we don't believe we can. So we, we think that since this is authorized, since this is in process, that our best route is to try to get this a good solid, you know, obviously, you can only rush ordinance drafting so much, because you don't want to put something on the books and find out that you made a mistake.
Right.
But it's to try to get this on the books as quickly as we can. It's been a long, it's, it's been a problem that the staff has known about for a long time, and we're late to fixing it, but we are now in process of fixing it. And so our best advice, at least as I stand here right now, is to try to just throw resources at this and accelerate this through the process as quickly as we can, because it is a, it is a significant issue. And you're quite correct, putting a coffee shop in an inline storefront in an old building in a quaint retail area should not trigger right-away dedication, all the other things that this variance, the variances would be necessary for. And I think everyone is in agreement on the substance, but this is the vehicle, probably, probably the best vehicle for solving it.
Okay, well, you also needed city council authority to move forward with the text change, so.
We have already.
Yes, no, I'm, I'm saying, I'm glad that we have moved that forward. What's your timeline?
I'll try to go real fast, so you're talking about timeline on the text change. Oh. So again, we're now in the middle of January.
That was the right answer, I'll try to go really fast.
Our goal, our goal was to have, I mean, our, our original timeline, as it stood before this most recent issue arose, was that we would have the, the recommendation of what we're doing in two weeks, and then we would do the co-drafting, and that would take another couple of weeks, and we'd go to planning commission, then come to you. What we're going to try to do is see if we can accelerate this process a little bit faster than that. But realistically, we have to send it to the planning commission. If they can dispatch with it in a single meeting, we will try to make that happen, but you know, they, they are going to do the review they feel is necessary to make a recommendation, comes back to you, then it can be calendared for public hearing two weeks after you get it, and at that public hearing, it can be voted on. So realistically, our best-case scenario is sometime in March.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick, a quick request. It probably, it would help me and probably all the new folks, if you include just these projects and reports, where they originated or who requested them, because you're getting that per, per each one. So just if you just include that in, in the future.
Okay, and I will, I will verbally include it for the next, next, I think, three things that we're going to talk about here. So this had its origin as a citizen petition, and it was authorized by council and put in our budget for this fiscal year. And it was to update an existing area plan that's called Old East Raleigh, and it's essentially an area between downtown Tarboro Road, south of New Bern, and north of Martin Luther King. And the impetus behind this was that, since this plan was done, BRT is on the table, some sites that weren't on the table are now available, such as the Department of Motor Vehicle Site on Tarboro and New Bern, and the market is way different than it was when this plan was done in 2006. So there was a desire from the community to update some of the guidance, and it was kind of triggered by a particular zoning petition that went away, but the, the notion that there's going to be redevelopment here is still very live, and so they wanted to look at that. The other one from the, from the same budget, which is also a request of council, was a Wakefield area plan. This is up in the very northeastern reaches of Raleigh, near Wake Forest, and is essentially continuing the, the planning that was done on the Falls of News Corridor to the south, north, all the way to its intersection with US-1, encompassing the major commercial and multifamily areas that are at the core of the Wakefield area. Now, both this and the prior area plan were approved for $75,000, which are sufficient to do, I think, a reasonable job for these, but also somewhat small, on the small side for attracting some consultants. So what we decided to do was something we've done in the past, which was do a joint RFQ with both these studies, where folks could bid on one or both of them. And if the winning bid was for both of them, there might be some economies of scale, particularly if there was any out-of-town travel involved. We have not issued these RFQs, but they're fairly close and ready to go, it's just that while we had other things in, in front of these. So that's the status of those. And then the last thing was two, two other things. So I put this in here, even though it's not necessarily a project, but everything we've been talking about, and we've gotten a number of referrals from council, is that there is a desire to look at a sort of large suite of reforms to our development code. So we talked about plot plan, site plan. There's a request for low-hanging fruit for housing diversity and affordability, our report on that is coming back to you in February. We've been asked to look at barriers in the code to small-scale investment in small business. We think that there's some recommendations from the Hillside and Residential Info Studies, desire that we're hearing from internally and from the industry on overall process and clarity. We also have, are still working through text changes related to the process for approving design adjustments and alternates. So a lot of text changes on the horizon. I think we've heard today that the plot plan, site plan is the clear priority for right now, but I just want to put this out there to say that there's a lot of stuff coming. Our goal is to try to make sure that this stuff is bundled together in text changes that, that, if it, that put related items together for, so that it can go through the process more expediently. But just, just letting you know, there's a lot of UDO-related things that are on our plate right now, and we expect more.
Excellent.
And then the last one is, we are, as we move through these BRT systems, we're going to start moving into specific station area planning. So we have the Equitable Development Study, this looking at the whole system from a high altitude and doing some broad goal setting. Then we're doing project development, which is designing the infrastructure and locating the stations, and then after that's done, we have to have some detailed planning for what are the appropriate land use intensities and street networks and infrastructure for the specific station areas themselves. And that is a phase that's coming at us relatively fast, and we have put in a grant that we're hoping to, to win from FTA to help fund this, but we do see the need for station area planning along BRT is sort of driving our area planning agenda going forward, because there's enough of it to occupy our resources in a significant way. So we're just putting the council again on notice that this is a, this is a horizon item that's coming at us, it's being driven by the Wake Transit Plan, and we expect it to consume a lot of our bandwidth. And I'll pause, because I, that's my last slide.
Question. You put these under major projects on the horizon, so what's your definition of major? What I'm trying to get to is that, the, is it use of staff?
It takes more than a couple of months to do.
Takes more than a couple of months?
Yeah. You know, but major, major uses of staff time, and you know, some of the things I put on the, on the development code reforms are not huge in and of themselves, when you start stacking them all up together, it becomes a major component in our work program.
So what, how many major projects do you typically have going at the same time within the, the department?
It depends, but I would say it's not uncommon to have at least 10 happening at any given time, you know? There's the really big ones, which are consultant studies of, you know, big area plans. We typically might have three or four of those live at any given time, and then you add in all the other sort of more significant research studies or, you know, major code changes or other things, and then we're up to 10, 15. As I said, we have about 16 in the hopper right now.
Take the code reforms out, the, the other three were requested by council?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And some of the code reforms are responding to council requests, or many of them are, yeah.
All right, any other questions? Okay, you're obviously busy. We thank you for being here today, Ken, and tell your team to keep up the great work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have presentation on the Civic Campus. I have a question for the city attorney. I have a conflict on this case. My employer, Holt Brothers, is involved with the CM at Risk team. I want to know from just an ethics standpoint, do I need to leave the table for a presentation? We're not voting on anything today, correct? So what, what, what is the proper thing for me to do?
The ethics resolution and the general statutes aren't triggered unless you are actually taking action on a legislative item, so you are fine without, you don't have a conflict if you're just listening to a report or information. As the, that says if, it's, it's any council action, you shouldn't take any action that could create a benefit potentially to your employer or entity that you're a director on. So you're fine today. I do think each time that it comes up, that we probably need to talk about it individually and decide, you know, whether or not it's a situation where you might need to recuse yourself, but just getting information at a work session doesn't trigger any council action, so I wouldn't participate in any major way, but I think you're fine to remain at the table, and the information presented is, is public information as well.
Okay, well, it's, this. Okay, well, as this moves forward, I will be sure to do that in a public and transparent way. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Priscilla?
Good afternoon, Mayor Baldwin and members of city council. Construction management appreciates the opportunity to provide you with an update of Phase 1 of the civic campus project, which is the East Civic Tower. In May of 2016, city council authorized a master plan study for a new consolidated civic campus to be located on the currently-used Avery C. Upchurch block. In October of that year, city council approved the contract with Skidmore, Owings &amp; Merrill, SOM, the consultant for the master plan. On September 18, 2018, city council adopted the master plan for the civic campus, which included three phases. Phase 1, the 20-story, 420,000 gross square foot building at a budget of $190 million is going to be a tower that promises to be iconic, aspirational, and reflective of a 21st-century city of innovation. So now I'll give you a quick overview of the master plan. The project provides an opportunity to improve the operations for the city. The city's presence in the downtown Raleigh area is spread among five different locations, and this fragmented campus poses a variety of challenges, including access, workforce efficiency, and security. SOM identified seven guiding principles for design that are depicted on this slide. As mentioned, the civic campus master plan identified three phases associated with the transformation of this municipal block. Phase 1 is our current project, the East Civic Tower, 420,000 gross square feet. Phase 2, planned for the current location of the Raleigh Municipal Building, will be the West Civic Tower of similar size, and also includes the creation of a shared public plaza between the Twin Towers. And the last phase, slated for the location of the RMB parking deck, is a public-private partnership mixed-use development project. Again, Phase 1, the East Civic Tower, will be 20 stories. It'll allow for the consolidation of all downtown staff into one building, and it provides for nine to 14 years of growth capacity for move-in. The selection processes for the designer and construction manager at risk, known by the acronym C-M-A-R, were qualifications-based processes that included RFQ solicitations and evaluations by selection committees that were multidisciplinary and representing several departments. The design firm is Ratio, a local firm with a national presence that has teamed up with Henning Larson, an international firm. The Ratio Raleigh Studio will manage the process, manage the project, excuse me, with Henning Larson serving as the design architect, utilizing its staff from its New York and Copenhagen studios. In January of 2019, city council approved the use of C-M-A-R as the project delivery method. The C-M-A-R delivery method was chosen because a project of this size and complexity requires a higher level of collaboration and coordination. In a C-M-A-R delivery, collaboration is the method of interaction. It starts early with project development and continues to construction completion, which results in the mitigation of risk, the management of constructability, and the dual ownership of budget. The city has successfully utilized C-M-A-R delivery on other projects, the Central Operations Center, the Central Communications Center, and most recently, the Raleigh Union Station. Brassfield and Gory is the C-M-A-R, and it will work in association with Holt Brothers Construction. On August 20 of 2019, council approved the contracts. The designer contract is for $13.6 million for comprehensive design services through the warranty period, and for the C-M-A-R, $1.38 million, which addresses the pre-construction services. There will be another contract to come before you for your approval, which will be for the construction services, and that will be at the guaranteed maximum price, which will be the total price of the construction. For public engagement, our strategy will be comprised of in-reach and outreach components. Outreach opportunities will include listening and review sessions, surveys, public space charrettes and open houses, stakeholder group meetings, and the project's website. So what's next? What's the path forward? Here's our estimated project timeline. Right now, this is our best guesstimate, and I can assure you it's likely to change. But the designer NTP was issued on January 6. We expect the C-M-A-R notice to proceed to be issued January, February timeframe. Public engagement, we anticipate that to start February or March. The demolition of the 110 South McDowell Street building will occur around winter of 2021. Construction will start in earnest in spring of 2022, with the likelihood of some early packages before that time, with an anticipated construction completion date of spring of 2024. There are more touchpoints with city council to come. The project team will request your approval of various technical consultant contracts, the selection of the public art consultant and artists, and the C-M-A-R construction services contract that I mentioned earlier. We will also seek your approval of the final design and your authorization to move to the construction phase, and there will be periodic project, project progress and budget updates. There's no doubt that this is an important project for the city. It's a high priority. It satisfies a critical need in the consolidation of services, and it will have its fair share of challenges, but it will definitely be exciting. But mostly, it will be transformational, because this project will be the new public city heart, city heart for, for the city of Raleigh. Staff is available for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions of staff? We all good? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I would like to take a moment, mayor and council, just to say thank you, not only to the leadership of Priscilla Williams and Engineering Services, but really, there's a pretty large interdepartmental team that works on this. And if I started saying categories and names, I'd be here forever. But this is transformational, and it is going to require a lot of support from the mayor and council for this to succeed. Whenever you start talking about new building space, that does impact our organization, as well as the interaction with citizens, space and design matters. And so that's a part of the design process moving forward. So we're really looking forward to it, looking for, looking forward to working with you and getting your support. It's going to be a really exciting project, so stay tuned for more. So.
Oh, excuse me.
Not a question, one thing I just want to let fellow council members know that this really takes staff out of four buildings downtown and bring them all into one location. So that's one of the things that I think will help drive efficiency and our customer service as we move forward.
I wish we could build it quicker so we could work on it right now. It looks fantastic.
Well, we will be asking for your feedback.
Also the illustration.
Yes, right, we will be looking for your feedback as well, since some of this will be your space to help manage as well.
One thing I wanted to mention, and Priscilla, I don't know if you have this article or not, but I had seen an article written about new ways that municipal buildings are being designed and having it more public-friendly. And they quoted the Henning Larson in that article on several occasions, just some of the very unique things that they were doing in designing. So, I can see after reading that why they were selected. It was pretty interesting. And then when we were on a trip to Copenhagen this past summer, I got to see their work at the Opera House. It was magnificent. So, excited to see what happens in the future.
We're very excited about the project, thank you, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have solid waste route balancing.
It's, it's almost as exciting as a new civic campus building, right?
Wow, wow.
It's a matter of perspective. I'm trying to get us out of here, man.
We're not comparing what is inside the buildings and what's inside these trucks, are we?
No, no, I don't think so.
You guys think you're helping, but you're not. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, Stan Joseph Solid Waste Services. I've got some of my team with me here. I've got our Assistant Director of Operations, Josh, and we've got Terrence, our Technology Manager, and a couple of folks who are our vendor that assisted us with this route balancing project from Capstock Logistics and Technology. So, I'm going to go through this slide deck so fast you may not even see it, but I'm going to talk a little bit about what's occurring and certainly willing to answer any questions. So, when I came to solid waste about 15, 16 months ago, I identified some, some top items that we needed to deal with. And one of them was that our routes were imbalanced. You know, we had our trucks kind of crossing over each other and just being kind of inefficient. Part of the reason is because we've grown so quickly that when we had a, let's say, an eight-hour route, and then we had annexations and growth, it turned it into an 11-hour route, but it was only happening in certain areas. So then it went to 12 hours and 13 hours, and we added another truck. So we had some routes that were 11 hours and some were like six, eight hours. And so we didn't really plan for that growth, and I think that was one of the first things that we recognized here, was, I'm not sure, there we go. That was one of the first things we, I recognized in this department was that we hadn't done a route balancing in many years, and the result was that we had inefficient routes, which leads to all kinds of problems, which is inefficiencies, trucks being in the same area, and, you know, a lack of responsiveness to serve our customers. So, we enlisted in November 2018 a consulting company to come in, and we issued an RFP, and the winner was Capstock Logistics Technology. They've done route balancing in cities like the city of Charlotte and rebalancing their routes after some time. I think the average time for a route balanced is probably about three years. Every three years, you should look at your routes to make sure as they're growing, that they're growing efficiently. And we hadn't done it since 2013. Plus, we're one of the fastest-growing cities in the United States, so I think we should have probably looked at them a lot frequently. Anyway, we did it. We, it is almost complete. Some of the goals, like it states here, was to balance the distribution of work, mitigate the service disruptions. I think when we look at our routes and we become more efficient, instead of having two trucks running over each other, we just have one trucks, then we give ourselves more capacity for things like when hurricanes occur, when we have staffing shortages, so we can just be more efficient. And then what we also wanted to do is when we built these routes, we wanted to build them for future growth. So let's build them with capacity, so we're not doing this a year or two later, essentially. So this is a very rudimentary slide. I don't know why that mark is there. Let's clear, there we go. All right, so this is a very rudimentary slide. I think you can see on the left, we have two trucks, and on the right, we have one. And this is an actual movement of our trucks in a part that, that we optimize or rebalance. And as you can see, we've got two trucks in the same area, and the red dashes is kind of highlighting the fact that we're running into each other, we're crossing the same paths, we're not being efficient. And, and here's the section afterwards. It's not just about going from two trucks to one truck. It's also about making right turns and making sure we don't duplicate our efforts. When you think about companies like Amazon and UPS and those sort of things, they are very efficient in their routes, because they're, you know, it's basically a profit company. And so, you know, the less fuel, the less miles, the more efficient they are. For us, it's about capacity and better service to our customers. So, at the end of it, we're ready to plan our execution of the routes, the balancing of the routes, and we plan to do that and go live with our new routes in April. Now, as a result of this route balancing, like any route balancing, there is a certain amount of our customers that are going to receive day changes in their service. So they may go from garbage from Thursday to a Wednesday, and, you know, recycling week may switch off from, you know, the first week to the third week. At the end of the day, we have about 125,000 resident households, and I expected about 20 to 25,000 changes, because we hadn't balanced our routes. But we were very mindful and thoughtful in the way we balanced them, and so we're only going to have about 4,000 residents affected. That's about 3% of our total amount of routes, which I, I think is a, is a very good story. And so we have developed and worked with the consultant on developing a very robust and detailed and effective communication program, very similar to the ones that rolled out in some of the cities that they worked with, so we can spend a lot of time letting our residents know who are affected by these changes, when it's happening, and, you know, afford them some time for questions and those sort of things. But again, it's 4,122,000. These are some of the key benefits of our route balancing. I think, again, anytime we can take a truck off the road and not have two trucks in one residential area in our neighborhoods is a great plus for us. When we look at the emission reduction, CO2 emission reductions from just doing the optimization, we're looking at 569 tons a year, which is anything to shake a stick at. And I think for us, there's a lot of intrinsic values in our maintenance, because we keep down the wear and tear on our vehicles. We're driving significantly less more miles, because we're not crossing paths and going on the same road. And, you know, with less miles on the road, not having to be out there as early or as late, finishing up a long route in, you know, the dark of night and those sort of things. We try to come in before that happens. You know, we improve the safety for our drivers and for our neighborhoods and the residents around. So, that was quick, right? I'm here to take any questions about the route balancing. It's one of those things that, you know, it took us some time, because we wanted to do it right, and it was definitely an area that, that was on the list of things we needed to, to address in Solid Waste Services.
Mr. Branch?
Question that came up in CAC, one of our favorite fall things, leaf pickup. Will rebalancing help leaf pickup?
Are the leaves going to fall in your house?
And a lot of it has to do with residents feeling that, hey, we just saw the truck come down, and they got the leaves on this street, but we're one street over and they're still there.
So that's actually a great question, and the answer is yes. And let me tell you how. So we've got, you know, solid waste does pick up leaf, leaf and limb collection all year round, and then we kick into our seasonal service with transportation, who comes around with the VAC trucks. For us, when the leaves start falling, our volume picks up significantly, and we've got to slow down and add a lot of trucks. So, Capstech is looking at our routes right now so that we can plan for the volume increase and then have capacity when there isn't one. And so for us, it'll be more efficient, instead of just kind of having the same trucks, same number of trucks out there year-round, when we have that significant increase in volume at a certain time of the year.
I just want to really appreciate the amount of logistics and that kind of side of your brain on this, on this project, and really commend the additional benefits that are coming out, including the decreased carbon dioxide emissions. So, thank you, team. This is awesome.
You're awesome, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nicole's been giddy up here.
I'm so excited.
So.
I'll end this with a funny story. Let the, Stan and the department know that I, I have experience in this area. The hardest job I ever had was a summer I spent on the back of a garbage truck. My father was a longtime personnel director for the city of Burlington, and he put his children to work during the summer in the city. That may be cronyism now, but this was a long time ago, when you could do that. But he didn't, he didn't make sure we had good jobs. He made us, made sure we had very tough jobs. And this was back when you were actually riding on the back of the truck and had to get off at every house and get the cans, and there was no weight limits. They, people didn't use bags back then. So it was a very tough job in the middle of the summer, as you can imagine the things you saw and, and smelled. So, it is, it is, it is tough work, and I appreciate the work that y'all do. And I always reflect back that, on that summer that was incredibly. And I always reflect back on that summer that was incredibly tough, but it made me very interested in also in city work and the details of city work, but also hard work is good for you. So thank you.
Councilman, I appreciate that, and I'm glad you have experience, because, you know, we always have trucks that we need some staffing.
Or staffing.
Councilmember Knight just volunteered to pick up leaves.
I'd be glad to drive.
I'm coming to see you.
Not ride.
We are still on the back of trucks, actually, getting off and on, and I always appreciate council support when it comes to Solid Waste Services, because of just that very difficult, labor-intensive, hard, physical and demanding work that we do. We're in front of our residents every single week. We see them every single week, and for us, that's an opportunity, and so we always appreciate the support. Thank you.
Well, you know, we also have a long history with solid waste in Raleigh, because when I moved here, our solid waste officers actually came to your backyard and picked up your trash, and you became friendly with them. They would wave to you as they're going by the window, and, you know, I think that's one of the reasons why, for people who have lived here for a while, there is this kind of simpatico and appreciation. So make sure you let everybody know how much we appreciate all you do, and that Counselor Knight is ready to join them on the route.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, I'm serious about that. Yes, I'll pass that on. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's it. Okay. Done. Thank you, everybody, for being here, and we will see you next Tuesday for our regularly scheduled meeting. Does anybody have any comments or anything else they want to say before we adjourn? Okay. There we go.